It's 6 o'clock. At this time, I call a regular meeting of the Perry City Council, March 1, 2016. Order please. We have a call. Item 3 is the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If you would, please rise. At this time, I would like to call on Councilman Jones, a disciple of Christ, for our invocation.
Let's pray.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for everyone gathered here. Father, we ask now that your Holy Spirit be with us and lead us and guide us as we attempt to lead the city of Perry, Lord, in the way that would best glorify your name, the name of Jesus, that we pray. Amen.
I'd like to call on Councilman Riley Hunt to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 4, our community partner updates. Do we have any community partners with us who wish to give us an update at this time? Please come forward and tell us who you are and who you represent.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. Darlene McLendon with Perry Chamber of Commerce. And I did want to just make sure that you've got on your calendars for this month, March 19th, that Saturday, is our Perry Proud event from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. It is at the 900 section of Carroll Street. And also, we have business of the month this month, on the 24th, and our host will be Parish Construction Group out at their location. Please join us. And something that you probably haven't been to much, but we have student of the quarter coming out this month. That will be on March the 10th. I know it is during the week. It will be at 11:00 a.m. at the Springfield School, and it honors our elementary students that are excelling at their schools. So you're always welcome to join us for that as well.
Fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other community partners? I'll move it next time. Item 5, our appointments to boards, authorities, and commissions. Item 5A is an appointment to the Housing Authority of the city of Perry. Based on a conversation that we had in our pre-council meeting, it, I believe, is the consensus of council that we continue to keep this item on the table. And if council will consent with that, we will move forward and leave it there pending receipt of further information. Item 6 is citizens with input. Is anyone present who wishes to address council on any topic at this time? Tell us who you are and your address.
Davis Cozy, 809 Evergreen Street. Couple of things I wanted to talk about very briefly. One is yesterday at the Capitol, House Bill 727 was passed. That gives local communities authority over fireworks. And it's something that I spoke at in a town hall meeting with Senator Walker and Representative Blackman. It's very important that, I hope that municipal authority of Georgia, your municipal, whatever the municipal thing, GMA and the Associated County Commissioners will both lobby very hard for that bill. There's a competing bill in the Senate, and you know how things go to conference, and I just hope it's not watered down. The difference in the two bills, other than, you know, the part, the difference in the two bills that's important to me is this. Local control is given back to jurisdictions in the Senate bill, but only for the hours between 10:00 p.m. and midnight. And that's not much local control. In other words, any day of the year, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., fireworks can be used in the Senate version. In the House version, it gives local control back, all except for the, you know, 4th of July and January 1st, and the hours around those. And it takes them forever to try to say it, but basically, it's from about 1 o'clock, you know, from all day long and up to 1 o'clock, I think.
A.M.
A.M., yes. Well, A.M. There's other differences that are important. There's language in 727, the House bill, about harassment, you know, and also about DUI fireworks, using fireworks when you're under the influence, things like that. I think that's in both bills, actually. But the reason I'm bringing this before you is because it's real important to talk to Senator Walker, I think, and try to lobby not to have that bill come out of Senate Committee with some kind of substitute that's going to end up taking that local control away. I don't know how everybody feels about it in the public, but as far as I'm concerned, July 4th and January 1st is plenty of days to me for fireworks to be going off everywhere. The second thing I wanted to support, the idea that I read about in the paper about contracting downtown back to, basically, the old downtown district. The way I look at downtown, and I'll take a little blame for some things that maybe y'all have gotten blamed for. Some of the regulations of downtown have been an evolving thing over years. And having been on Downtown Development Authority, I know that it wasn't there to punish the businesses as much as to protect the ones that already developed a personality for downtown that was unique and to protect the, I guess you would call them, they're kind of like anchors downtown over the years, you know, that have been there for a long time and done things a certain way. So the recognition that, and I was thinking back to where downtown got expanded, the downtown district got expanded, and I was reminded of something you always heard, "Don't leave the room if you're on something," or "Don't miss a meeting because something can happen that changes everything." That's basically what happened with the Downtown Development Authority, in my perspective. There were two I was so near that would never have supported expanding the downtown, you know, the regulations of downtown outside of the walking pedestrian downtown area. I mean, it's very obvious what is, where the personalities of the three, I consider it three districts in Perry, really, from marketing standpoint. Downtown, the transition areas, or outside of downtown, and then the Interstate Corridor, which I think is totally different. I heard some, you know, when I was here, I didn't say anything. I was trying to really gather my thoughts at that meeting about the signs, but, you know, our exits, this is our 70th year in Davis Company. In 67 years, we've been a franchisee of Shell. And the franchise expectations of, franchisor expectations of franchisees, and I know Councilman Jackson and Councilman Walker know well about this because of franchise, but they've gone, they've gone from being a carrot to a stick as far as what they expect you to do in your particular locations. For years, if you've got a great mystery shop, you get a trip or something. Now, they take money away from you if you get bad scores. And sometimes those scores have to do with, you know, their national programs, like Mark Handy was talking about, banners for, you know, might be financing one month with GM. So, you know, and I don't want to dig up, I know you're glad to sign things behind you, but moving forward, if you would think about the Interstate Corridor and the franchises, because that's where most of them are, and the fact that we are not only competing against each other on these exits, but our exits are competing with other exits. And so my vision for what the Interstate area ought to be is like you pull off, it's nice and clean, and it looks like a party's going on, you know, because, you know, and I was glad to see Hardee's coming. I know I probably talked too long, but it's, a lot of things were said that seemed negative, and I think Perry's probably got the nicest exits on the Interstate. And hopefully, in the future, we can, you know, bring business in on the decision-making and kind of all be singing out the same song. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cozy. Would anyone else like to speak?
My name is Jimmy McLeod, and I live on Marshall Circle. And we have a problem with people in our neighborhood placing basketball goals facing the street. And back when I was coming up, we had basketball goals on the driveway, facing the driveway, you know, and everybody stayed out of the street. We got kids, especially when school's out, you know, there's a lot of kids gathered right there, close to Park Avenue and Marshall Circle, and you have to slow down a lot of time before you get out of the street so you can come by, you know. And it seems to be a safety issue, you know, because, you know, and another issue, too, we got kids that come through there from the high school sometime. They'll just come through there, go about 30 miles an hour, and then they come back out, and they're, it's so close to the high school parking lot. And I think would be a good idea if we could get some kind of sign there that eliminates kids from coming through there at a certain time of day, because it is a danger, because we got little kids in the, on the street. Matter of fact, we got some that ride their scooters in the street, and sometimes they'll lay their scooters in the street, and, you know, if you coming through there without being aware, you know, one of them run out in front of you, you know, they're going to get hurt. And it's, it's just not a good situation. And I just believe something ought to be done, especially by the basketball goals, you know, and the kids coming through in their cars. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. Major Phelps, will you look into both of those issues, please, and get a report back to Mr. Gilmore to distribute to us, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 7, our consent agenda items. Item 7, a council, your consideration, you have been provided the minutes at the February 8th, 2016 called work session, the February 16th, 2016 pre-council meeting, the February 16th, 2016 council meeting. And there's a note that you see that Councilmember Bynum Grace was absent from both meetings on February the 16th. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any additions, changes, deletions, or discussion concerning these minutes as presented? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. All is opposed? Any abstentions?
No. But 16th.
Please let the record indicate Ms. Bynum Grace abstains from the minutes for the 16th. The motion carries. Thank you. Item 8 is old business. Item 8A, or ordinances for the second reading and adoption. Item 8A1 is the second reading of an ordinance that amends the fiscal year 2016 operating budget. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your packet is an amendment to the FY16 budget, which adjusts revenues and expenditures based on transactions through December 31st, makes adjustments to fund balance based on the audit, and also adds some additional funds, for example, some construction funds that were not originally budgeted. And we recommend to you to adopt.
How often do we adjust this budget, Mr. Gilmore?
Usually once a quarter.
Okay. Is there anything out of line in these adjustments that you're proposing for us to look at tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions of Mr. Gilmore concerning the proposed adjustments for this ordinance that will amend the FY16 operating budget? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance that will amend the fiscal year 2016 operating budget as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second.
Second.
Mr. Hunt? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8B is the award of bids. Item 8B1 is the award of an animal facility improvements design build project. Council, you have, we have seen the bids that were received for this particular project. You have before you, and we have seen before us, the bids in their entirety in previous meetings. We had this particular item on our agenda for our last regularly scheduled council meeting, and I had asked for there to be a delay in order for the mayor's task force for stray animals to have an opportunity to look at the bids, and y'all were gracious and granted that. That has happened. At this time, we are in a position to award this bid. I'm getting there. This is what happens when you have an old computer. It doesn't refresh as fast as you want it to. You have before you the low bid from one of the proposals, and that is from Parish Construction And their bid was in the amount of $544,022. Y'all need to remember that this is an estimate. The other bidders were significantly higher than this. So if council is ready, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we award the animal facility improvements design build project to Parish Construction Group based on the project documents that they have submitted and that we have reviewed.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. At this point in the process, Parish Construction Group will take the, their proposal, and they will begin a design specifically for our particular request for an animal control facility. I would like to ask that they take input, as you have in the past, from the mayor's stray animal task force, and make sure that we incorporate not only their interests, but also mayor and councils, and at the appropriate time, have the preliminary design come back before council so that we can check on the progress of this particular project. We're excited that we are finally bringing this project to fruition, and we are also glad that we are making some very needed improvements to a facility that has been living for quite some time. Parish Construction Group is represented by Mr. Charlie Griffiths. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
And we're looking forward to working with you and your group as we move forward. And also, Mr. Mesley with JMA Architecture, I know you've had something to do with this as well. So we're looking forward to working with you in that. Thank you. Item 9 is any other old business matters. Item 9A is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. 9B is any other old business matters from council members? Ms. Bynum Grace?
I have none.
Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 9C is any other old business matters from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 9D is any other old business matters from the city attorney, Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 10 is new business. Item 10A are matters that have been referred from yesterday, February 29th, 2016 work session, and today, March the 1st, 2016 pre-council meeting. Mr. Gilmore, is there anything from last night's work session that we need to address at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Also, Mr. Gilmore, is there anything that we need to address from our March the 1st pre-council meeting we had at 5:00 this afternoon that we need to address at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 10B, council will be asked to consider the Perry Area Chamber of Commerce requests for city services relative to the 2016 Dogwood Festival, which will occur on April the 9th and 10th, 2016. Major Phelps?
Mayor and council, we have reviewed the request from the chamber, and based on the request, we recommend approval. We don't see any changes from the last festival. And they are asking of that certain street because that's in your pocket. If you have any question, please let me know at this time. They're also asking for three trams to be running just on Saturday. They will not be ending on Sunday. And basically, if you have any question, I'm prepared to ask them at this time.
Does council have any questions of Major Phelps concerning this particular request? Before you sit down?
Yes.
Mr. Clinton, do you have anything to add?
One note, we are changing the children's zone from behind the Swanson to the parking lot behind the Southern Suites right there on Main Street.
Adjacent to Perry Players?
Yes, sir. Which was used in the past as our vendor parking, so it doesn't change the footprint any. But that will be a realignment of the children's zone.
Question we had there was around electrical service. Are you going to bring in generators for including your elements, or?
We're looking into whether we will provide, like a generator truck, or most of the children's activities, those companies have their own generators, because there is not enough power service there.
Because we knew the focus was the power service up behind the Swanson, we provided them with power, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes than that?
No, sir.
Thank you. Major Phelps, you see any major issues with that change?
No, sir.
On that battalion chief route, is the fire department okay with those changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything further?
No.
Council, do you have any questions of Mr. Clinton or Major Phelps concerning the request for city services for the Dogwood Festival, April 9 and 10, 2016? Thank you, sir. Hearing none, council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the Perry Area Chamber of Commerce's request for city services relative to the 2016 Dogwood Festival, April 9 and 10, 2016, as described and updated.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're looking forward to another great event. Item 10C, we have a request from Lane Southern Orchards relative to a waiver for a well they wish to drill at 501 Valley Drive. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet is a request from Lane Southern Orchards to have the city authorize their installation of an irrigation well off of Valley Drive. You also have in your packet a response from Mr. Deal indicating that their proposed location is within the prohibited zone from the city's production well at the former Holiday Inn Ramada now, and the recommendation would be to deny this request because of the potential impact on the city's production well.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Council, you have the information before you concerning the request to drill an irrigation well. You also have the information that we have from Mr. Gilmore and staff requesting it's denied. Are there any questions of Mr. Gilmore concerning this particular request? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that addresses this particular request.
So moved.
A move, we deny the request.
Thank you. I didn't ask it the right way. I'm sorry, Mr. King. There is a motion to deny the request. Mr. Jones, second in the motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously to deny the request. Thank you. Item 10D, we are being asked to approve a professional services agreement between the city of Perry and Grant Specialists of Georgia Incorporated. Mr. Smith?
Mayor and council, as you are aware, the Perry housing team is working to put together an application for funding for chip funding this year. The application is due March 18th, and we're requesting approximately $300,000 to do rehabilitation and/or reconstruction work in the Sand Hill neighborhood. What you have before you tonight is a recommendation from the housing team to move forward with Grant Specialists of Georgia and the administration of this grant, should it be awarded. And you also have before you a draft contract to that effect, and we would like approval pending review from the city attorney.
Mr. Smith, how much will this particular grant, should we be successful, cost the city of Perry?
It will cost the city of Perry nothing. The only thing the city is committed to is waiving permitting fees associated with any sort of rehab or reconstruction that might take place.
And that's been our standard practice in the past, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Smith concerning this particular grant? I know the housing teams have been working on this. The deadline for the grant application is?
March 18th.
Her fee will be paid out of the proceeds if we're successful.
That is correct.
She has a percentage coming for administering it.
Yes, sir.
She has a history of doing this, administering grants?
She does. She's very well qualified, the entire firm is. She's done a number of projects for a number of different communities with lots of success. So we would anticipate nothing less for the city of Perry.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith and council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council, you've heard the information, you've got it before you. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve this professional service agreement between the city of Perry and Grant Specialists of Georgia Incorporated, subject to city attorney review.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Item 11, our department head items. From the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, we have battalion chief Robbie Raul with us. Chief?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of items. Just a quick reminder, March 17th, there will be a joint meeting between mayor and council, the planning commission regarding form-based code. We'll have staff at DSW and Town to receive public input, should there be any. Also, on March 21st, from 11:30 to 1:30, staff will be hosting a drop-in informational session regarding the downtown development plan. So all the public is welcome to come and provide input into the plan, unless staff will hand you any questions they might have. We try to have that at a good time where everyone's in a much break. That's all I have.
What's the date for that joint meeting with the city council?
It's March 17th.
Thank you.
What time, 6:00 p.m.?
6:00 o'clock p.m.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. From the Department of Public Works, Mr. Aaron?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The leaf bag initiative flyer is going in the mail yesterday, so citizens should start receiving them. That's all I have.
Will you please keep a rough estimate of the calls that you get concerning that?
Yes.
Both positive and negative?
Yes.
Thank you. From the Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Dyke?
I do not have anything to add, my sir.
Thank you. From Police Department, Major Phelps?
We just want to remind you, we have Peach's Beaches in April, that's the 12th.
March.
March, sorry, March. March that anyway.
Thank you, Major. From the Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. I believe that's everybody. Okay. Item 12, our council member items. Ms. Bynum Grace?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 13, general public items. Is there any member of the general public who wishes to address council on any item at this time? Thank you. Item 14, our mayor items. Ms. Warren has asked me to remind council that we have some Georgia Municipal Association registration forms that are due her. If we would please get that information to her by Friday so that she might make the necessary arrangements to secure the classes that we wish to take at the next regularly scheduled event in June. We will have a walk with mayor and council. It will happen in March. We've had some conflicts, and it's postponed a couple of times. It will be March the 29th. That will be a Tuesday, and it will be at 5:30 in District 3. Mr. Walker and Mr. Hunt will determine a route and let Ms. Warren know, and she will get that information out to council and the general public. We would encourage your participation. I promise it is not taxing. You can walk and talk at the same time. It's a great communication tool. We look forward to that on a monthly basis. This morning, myself and a firefighter and a police officer had the opportunity to participate and read a in Read Across America Week. We went to Kings Chapel Elementary School and read books to kindergarteners. The first comment I had was, you've got a big tummy. You gotta love it. You gotta love it. And she happened to be correct from that standpoint. It's a lot of fun. In keeping with that, Read Across America will have an event tomorrow at the Perry Public Library at 11:15. I will be reading again, and I can't wait to hear the comments. It is always fun to interact with our children, the future of America. Please support our children at any opportunity that you have. The Robbins Regional Chamber will have their regional outlook on March 15th at Central Georgia Technical College at the Roy H. Sonny Watson Health Sciences Building in what they called the Quads. And the main reason I mention it is because I am on the agenda to speak, along with the other two mayors and Ms. Angie Geisling, for an update for what's happening in the respective cities and the economic development arm for accounting. That is always interesting. That is March 15th at Central Georgia Tech on Cohen Walker Drive at 11:30. Our next regularly scheduled work session will be on the 14th of March in this room at 5:00. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is also on the 15th. The pre-council's at 5:00, the council meeting is at 6:00, and I will remind everyone that all of our meetings are open to the public. You are more than welcome to attend and participate, should you so desire. Unless I have missed something, I believe that is all I have. If there is nothing else to come before us, thank you for your interest and participation. We stand adjourned.